Okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, it really is.
Hi, so today is a meeting of the Langley Adams Library Board of Trustees, September 10th meeting. And we have the cameras and Inez.
Steel.
Well, I was, one of the things I was gonna say is that we're gonna try not to use too many names today. So we have an audience and we're on TV. So I'm Elizabeth Burton, the Chair.
Jen Close, Vice Chair.
Lori LeBlanc, Treasurer.
Tom Clark, Interim Director.
Anne Murray.
Say it again.
Tom Clark, Interim Director.
Anne Marie Wilson Crockett, Trustee.
Heidi Snyder, Trustee.
Barbara Groban, Trustee.
Candy Carney, Trustee.
Thank you. So I appreciate everybody meeting early this month because I realized last month without approving the, you know, stating the Library Director's Search Committee fully and approving it, we really couldn't go forward.
We haven't made a motion to open the meeting yet.
Oh, thank you.
I make a motion to open the meeting.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, continue.
So that we couldn't go forward with the Director's Search. So in trying not to hold that up, I asked that we meet early. So I appreciate that. So we were gonna put that at the end of the agenda so that Denise had recommended that since Tom is a candidate, that we not talk about Library Director's Search Committee activity with you present. But that doesn't mean it's not a public meeting and you can watch it and there's nothing hidden, but not.
I wholly agree.
Yeah, so anyway, so we're gonna put that actually at the end of the meeting. I don't have any correspondence, but Lori, it looks like you might have correspondence on there, or is that your own mail?
That's my stuff.
Anything in the box?
I gave it to Lori.
Okay.
These were for the secretary.
Okay, so we have some copies of the meetings. Thank you. All righty. So did everybody get a chance to read the minutes of the last meeting? Did Carlos send them out?
No.
Okay, 'cause I could read them if you wanted them read.
I think people. Yeah. Everybody silence their cellphones? Thanks. So we'll, we'll, what's the word I wanna say? postpone table.
Table.
The approval of the minutes until.
Till the September 24th meeting.
24th meeting, okay. Any seconds?
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstaining? So Director's Report. So Tom just passed that out. I, again, because of moving the meeting, we just received it right now. I actually haven't had a chance to peruse it.
Do you have an extra?
Does anybody need a minute or two to peruse it, or should we just let Tom talk? And our goal is to, you know, be brief, but informative.
The opening stuff is the August statistics, the very beginning. I haven't gotten the Evergreen stats yet. I sent out to MVLC that they get them to me because we're a week into September. So for the 24th meeting, this will be filled in. All of the stuff that I have at the library, I was able to fill in programs, museum passes. The only thing I'd point out would be that the new statistics I added was the website usage, and that will also, I plan on making that a separate deliverable for the 24th meeting because there's some interesting information in that. I don't think there's anything really here that leaps out to be spoken about, although we do wanna address the New England Library Association Conference at the top of page three. I did get permission for the early, an extension to the early Bird registration fees. And what's going to happen is I'm going to be sending the conference registration and membership dues information off to the Administrator, Bob Shire, from the New England Library Association. And he is going to generate a single invoice that we will be able to pay via credit card.
Sorry, there's a fly in here.
Thanks.
Okay, so we talked more about the NILA last meeting, so I don't think there's anything new or different there. And that's great that we can get it all on one invoice.
I'm sorry, I just realized that I said vouchers see attached, and I didn't bring the single sheet. I do have a single sheet of all of the expenses, all of the voucher expenses for fiscal year. When I leave, what I'll do is I'll leave early.
Everything that's on here is right here.
Not everything, those are just the ones to be signed. Yeah, what I did is I created a grid, and it's going to be inputted against the budget for the September 24th, but I can drop that off so that you guys have a copy of that so you can see all the single line item purchases that have been made.
That'd be wonderful.
Yeah, that's totally needed. Thanks, Tom. And I have one question is, what's the financial report that's due October 10th?
The, it's called, it's just simply referred to as the Financial Report. That's what qualifies you for state aid.
That's the second step in the state aid process.
Exactly. Eris being the first one, and this Financial Report the second.
So it should be like state aid financial report. It's not a town financial report, which is what I was thinking it was. Okay, so let us know if you need any help and information.
And that'll be at our next meeting, right? So we can look at it before it gets sent in.
Before, yeah, before it goes in.
Okay.
It has to be signed by the Chair, I believe.
Right.
So being ready for the 24th would be perfect, so other people can look at it as well.
Okay.
I shut my, my thing off so that nobody had to listen to my, moving my papers, so.
That's right.
I don't have any other questions. Anybody have any questions?
Do we not need a motion on the NILA's information?
Yep. Okay, so I appreciate that. There was one other thing, just let me take for one minute.
There's a thing on here about interviewing two candidates for the Library Assistant Position. Tom is doing that?
Tom and Beth did that. We are hoping to get a third one in by the end of this week, otherwise that'll be brought up at the next meeting as well to present the candidates to the board and determine, you know, listen to their reasoning for choosing one.
We're hoping the third person calls and gets on the schedule.
Right.
So Lori, do we have a Treasurer Report?
I have, nothing has changed since our last meeting.
Yeah, only two weeks.
Right.
All right. And so at 7:15, we move on to Library Staffing. Tom, you get to leave.
Okay. What I will do is I will get the vouchers attachment and bring it back so that you can each have a copy. I'll just go grab those in my office right now.
Okay.
But I will come in and out.
Could I just ask one question, Tom? We have a process by which I see that there are, one person has several, many, many DVDs.
Oh, yes.
The first step is the calls and then a letter, and it goes through a series of.
We've done the calls, the emails, the next step is the letter, and each step of the way, you know, you guys get addressed as to response, lack thereof, and next steps.
Thank you.
Did you, is that in the procedure manual?
There is a procedure to follow for that. It's an old one, but it's a good one.
Good. No, I'm looking for any help I can have.
I think you might find that you have the procedure manual.
Beth? Excuse me for a second.
Brick wasn't the door, but the door's unlocked, so I'm going to walk the door, but put the brick so if someone wants to come in, they can. Then just close the door on your way out.
But it's an open meeting, so.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you, thank you. I get it now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Great, Kathy, so do you want me to get in touch with you then?
I'll bring you in tomorrow.
Barbara, to look at the polit, yeah.
Are you gonna be in the office tomorrow?
Yes. Great, thanks.
We'll be in the afternoon on my way home from Boston.
Okay, wonderful. All right, I shall return in a few minutes.
Okay.
Just briefly.
Make noise.
I know, it just keeps coming by.
So if anybody wants a DVD, we get, of the taped meetings, we get a DVD of all of them if you don't wanna watch them on Groban TV website.
Or I can watch us live, aren't you?
Yeah, or you can watch us live. Okay, so the Search Committee that we've talked about and we need to vote on, and the goal has always been to have, you know, a subgroup of the whole board, and that's the way it's been in the past. And having a small functional group to schedule everybody is another key element of having a Search Committee be a subset of the whole board. And then bringing back the candidate or the two candidates to the whole board is the goal then, to then move forward with that, those people, that the whole board can then make the final selection, that we bring to the selectmen to present, 'cause the selectmen make the final approval.
They're the hiring authority.
The hiring authority. So in the past, we've had a selectman, and in this, this year Denise Gomboski. Gomboski has offered to be in that place of a selectman, and the selectmen are very happy with that because she knows more municipal law than even they do. So, so she's gonna be in the committee, and the community member that we had talked about early in like May was Ron Mertens, and he has accepted.
Mertens.
Mertens, sorry. It's those letters. Being dyslexic doesn't help. So he has accepted being on the committee also. So it'll be a member of five, myself, Jen, and Carlos, because Carlos knows all of the computer stuff, so.
What does that got to do with it?
So when the.
I didn't understand that line of reasoning.
Because when a potential candidate asks about how the networking works and where the computer system is, or how much RAM we have, or who the, you know, how the Wi-Fi works, I wouldn't be able to answer any of those questions. And he's able to, you know, troubleshoot all the computers and know the resources that are at MVLC that are our support, our computer support.
I would also expect any candidate to know that stuff because they're gonna be qualified. But not saying you shouldn't have Carlos, but I'm just saying they're gonna know this.
But he'll ask those questions, too. He'll have the appropriate questions from that perspective of it, I would think, right? So it could go both ways.
That's a good point, too, yes. He'll be able to see how actually technology savvy they are or aren't by asking, you know, so what kind of, you know, what kind of computers do you, did you have at your last job? Or, you know, what do you expect, or what, you know, what's the goals of this size library? And they've done their homework. So I just feel like I would not be able to test that kind of questioning. And, so anyway, he said that he thought that was a good idea, and when we were, Lori and Jen and I were at the Committee for Selecting the Bibliotemp interim, Lori said, you know, Carlos has probably got the better, you know, ideas, she would be happy to step down because.
Ron Mertens is an excellent, he was the president of the Friends of the Library.
Right, and he's also an avid library user. He has, he has.
Counsel on Aging.
Yeah.
He's the chairman of the Board of Directors on Council on Aging.
The community member, and also the, one of the major demographics that the library serves.
And he's in the library between doing the book clubs and the game days with Scrabble and that kind of thing, so he really knows.
Thank you.
Various groups within that library, too, yeah.
He knows the library.
And also the inner workings, because of being the past president of the Friends, which you, if you noticed in Tom's report, is looking for new leadership.
Yes.
So the Friends had taken the summer off and.
Excuse me.
I don't know anything more than that, but other than noticing that it needs more, it needs new leadership. So that was the reasoning behind the, and a group of five. And the other thing is, is you have to have an odd number of people, so that the vote is never high. And then if you go, if you add more and more people, then you get, it's more and more difficult for.
You're cumbersome.
Yeah.
Work is to schedule everyone at the same time.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, Barbara, I mean, you know how hard it is to schedule from the last time, and you ran the, or was it Lisa who ran the other one? And it's just really cumbersome.
I know, we met on Saturdays, we met at night, we met because everybody worked.
Yeah, yeah, so, so.
And we should ask, I think, you know, would anybody else prefer to be on the committee?
I think you have an excellent.
You know, I just wanna open it up, just to make sure that, you know, we're not taking something away from.
Well, and they're open meetings, so any of us.
Right.
Actually, they're not gonna be open.
The interview, the first round of interviews are executive session, and then when we are down to the two or three candidates, then they become open meeting.
Right, the second interviews are open.
The second interview is open meeting.
I think Denise is a wonderful, wonderful, so we're very fortunate that she's on.
I'm very excited. Well, I had, I talked to her about, you know, the selectmen, and she said, well, if, you know, if you need me or want me, and then, and then I, I was like, oh, yes, please.
I think you get a well-rounded group.
I think.
I really do.
And actually not having a selectman and the Finance Director is helpful, because then we, then again, it gets more cumbersome, and then you have to balance it with another, you know, person.
She's very knowledgeable.
Yeah. But you have to really keep a firm.
Handle. And actually, the, we'll, we'll have to elect a Chair, a Search Committee.
As part of the library.
I get to, I get to keep that?
You or Janet Carlos have got to be.
Yeah, but you can decide that amongst yourselves.
So our hope is to, you know, start meeting as soon as possible. So again, so can I have a motion to accept or to present the board? I sent the Search Committee. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Standing courteously.
Courteously.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you.
And thank you for all your work. Thank you.
I think we have a good slate that we're, you know, going to start working with, so to start reviewing.
I can't remember the number, is it nine?
Oh, wow.
I can't remember whether it was seven or nine, but again, it was an odd number.
One moment, it's either seven or nine, no?
A good response, but excellent.
Are the application process being closed at this point?
Yes, it was closed on August 31st, and Tom was our last applicant. So like everybody said, it's either, you know, the beginning or the end that people, it was, yeah, so it was like, we got it slow in the beginning and.
Some at the end.
Yeah, two at the end. So Ms. Treasurer, would you like to read the voucher list? So normally.
We're gonna read this every time?
No, not this long, but normally it'll be like three or six with the Director Report. So the vouchers are only signed by five people.
So.
And in order to be processed, so there's, you know, a group of people that don't actually see the vouchers. So in general, we wanna state the number of vouchers that have been since the last meeting and their totals. So, so it would never be this long, but Tom hadn't brought it before, so it's this long.
So going back to our conversation of earlier of the Ingrams.
Being on materials versus.
Being on other, on materials, you know, how they see one for $2,100, we may.
Need to transfer that.
Need to transfer that over.
To transfer it, you have to go for a warrant. Which I checked with Denise, but.
Yeah.
So she said.
Exactly opposite way to do it, would be to go for.
Yeah, a warrant.
A warrant to swap it over.
Yeah.
Which I, that might be helpful if, when we get these figures from him every month, we see what, how, where he put it.
Category.
Because as I was saying before we started the meeting, couple, right after our la, not the last meeting, but the July meeting. Right after that, we had to go in and sign vouchers, and I saw a voucher sitting there and it had two museum passes on, one of which was the museum pass that we had decided in the July meeting, we wanted to have numbers on before we decided if we wanted to renew it. And it was already on a voucher with another one, and it had an O next to it, and I thought, I hope to God that didn't get signed and go through. I don't know.
I do believe it wasn't, because it's, I think it was the Children's Museum that we were talking about.
And I don't see it on here.
And that we.
Yeah, 'cause there were two museum passes on the voucher, and I just thought.
Yeah, we have.
You know, we told him not to, and.
Yeah, and there, there was.
And I purposely took it and I put it way in the other side of his desk so that hopefully no one would see it.
Have the Museum of Science and PBD Essex, that's the only thing that's wrong.
And went them.
And went them, right at the top.
And you're good.
That's a new one for us, which is an excellent.
So I know that he has been calling the Children's Museum, and they have been responsive to making some changes in what we have and what we're getting. So that, so I know it hasn't been moved through.
Just offhand again, the categories were materials, other.
Donation.
Donation.
State aid.
Is it supply? Is it state aid?
It's be state aid.
State aid, and then there's, you know.
I know, they were just on the bottom of what, no, he took them back, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have a, an old voucher? Just the notes for myself, 'cause I wanted to pay attention to.
There's only four cameras.
Yeah, they were not, so what, what are we changing? What are they?
We're not changing anything, just the Ingram ones were put under other instead of materials.
On the budget line, other.
On the budget line.
That's probably part of our materials, but it covers a lot of things. People covering and marking.
That's an old one, right? Is that?
Yeah, I was actually looking for a cover sheet, a budget, a voucher cover sheet if you had.
I wanted to say out loud, so that everybody also knows that right now, you know, Bibliotemp is also being paid from out of.
The operating budget.
Yeah, the operating budget. But in the end, when we come to the end of the fiscal year, we'll do like Kathy said, put a warrant in, and it'll be transferred over to the salary line. So when we finally see, but Tom didn't have another budget sheet, that spreadsheet.
No, not yet.
So hopefully on the 24th, we'll have the budget sheet that will say, so we'll see a lot more money in the salary line than really is there, because at the end of the year, what we've been paying Bibliotemp will be switched to.
Out of salary.
Out of the salary line.
We should make it earmarked, then. We should have another column on there, so we'd know it was earmarked, I think. That's what I've been trying to do on this other.
Yeah.
But on the other one, too, I think that, you know, rather than trying to remember what is gonna happen later, if we earmark it.
Jackie will have all the specific numbers. She'll give us a number.
That's what for us to.
Yeah, yeah, so we can be able to pull it together, so we can put it on that.
And I guess I'm gonna have to go through the vouchers to see how they apply on the report for the Treasurers in terms of, I'm putting in what we take out of donation, what we take out of state aid. So I'm gonna have to go on that, that I had just given you.
But that should show on the spreadsheet that Tom should be giving us.
So what we found out last time, though, is that Tom's not been doing that spreadsheet.
No, the, that's, it comes out automatically.
It comes out of the town budget.
Right, the town.
The working information.
Right, not the working one.
Yeah, this is something we do for ourselves.
Right, exactly, right.
So, so I'll read them. So Tom has on the list, it's fiscal year, week one, week, you know, or the '07, the more numbers. So I don't think I have to say those. Just Wenham Museum, $350, Zoo New England Pass, $400.
Excuse me for one second. So should there be another category on here in terms of where it came out of?
Yes, that's a photograph.
Yes, yeah. And in, in general, he, it would be coming out, I mean, he would be having it written right there.
Right. Right.
Ingram, 10 invoices for $218.97. Merrimack Valley Library Consortium, that's our consortium fees, is $15,447. Merrimack Valley Library Consortium, Freegold, I believe that's, that, that eight, is $1,855. Julie's Bibliotemp reimbursement, $456.41. Merrimack Valley Library Consortium, $229.47. Seacoast Lock and Safe, $42, that was supply. Quill, $209.40. Quill, $79.99. Demco, $67.38. Reimbursement to staff, $38.80. Quill, $402.94. Ingram, 32 invoices, $2,106.94. Constant Contacts is the software we use to send out newsletters, it's $336.
And that's a year-long contract that they paid.
Mass Library Systems is $1,372.67. Mass Library Systems, $2,755.20. Mass Library Systems, $1,072.76. That's Bibliotemp also, those Mass Library Systems. Christopher Klein Program, Hidden History, $150. Creature Teachers, $275. Museum of Science, $700. PBD Essex Museum, $300. Massachusetts Library System, $4,047.67. Mass Library System, $992.1. Ingram, 13 invoices, is $229.54. Mass Library Systems, $1,245.78. Mass Library Systems, $3,315.20. Bruce Watson, which is a program, $100. Seacoast Lock and Safe, which is the labor, $365.50. And Mass Library Systems, $5,466.48. So that's 15, no, sorry, I have no idea how many that is, but it's FY of 15 vouchers to date.
And that will cover warrants from 1501 to 1513.
Thank you. So I think we're done with our, our business. Yep.
I realize Robert's Rules of Order has a different way of keeping minutes, but our trustee handbook from the National Library Commissioners does say that we have to make sure that we, all motions are recorded, as well as the name of the person making the motion and the person's second amendment. We've changed that a bit. And I thought maybe we talked the last week about going back to that for our own, and a basis for it, because it's in this, in this.
Handbook.
Handbook. And you record decisions, actions, assignments, what, when, who, number of votes if appropriate, put members on record for or against a decision. So if it's unanimous, that covers it. If it's not, then you might want to roll call. And describing generally needs content.
So. So we did, I did see the minutes, so again, that might have been my miscommunication, but I, I thought I asked them to send it to everybody. but I, I thought I asked them to send it to everybody. He did add, um, all of our names for who, who was in attendance, um, 'cause that really helps also, um, so maybe I can photocopy that page, or what page is it, he'll look it up.
Page twenty-seven.
Page twenty-seven, so, so I'll tell Carlos, um, page twenty-seven, what to record.
And explains why, the recorded minutes of each board meeting constitute a public archival record of the institution's history. These minutes document the actual business of the library and will be kept for posterity, and that's what we do.
And what's that in?
This is page twenty-seven of the library trustee's handbook.
So MBLC's handbook.
Massachusetts Public Library Trustee's Handbook, a publication of Commonwealth of Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners.
Which they're updating every two years now.
Yes, we had, didn't have one for like fifteen years. And this is Jen's organization, it's like, I borrowed it from her.
Gotta love it. So is there any other business thoughts?
We want to open up for a public comment?
So, um, I didn't, um, offer, um, Anne, do you have any questions?
I have it open here, is it? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I was having a moment, trying to think of your name, so it's like, hmm, if I give myself a minute, I'll know, I'll remember it. So, okay, and there being no other questions, um, can we adjourn our meeting at whatever time it really is?
Seven thirty-eight.
All in favor?